Ready?
Yep.
All right, I'd like to call the August 25th meeting of the Bruce Township Zoning Board of Appeals to order, please. Roll call, Dana.
Kirk Mas.
Here.
Jenny Teller.
Here.
Jared Vincent.
Here.
Rick Barrett.
Here.
Tonka Coffin.
Here.
Is that on? Okay. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item four is approval of the agenda. Okay, motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Moved and supported, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, item five is approval of the previous minutes. First one is the minutes of June 2nd, 2025.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Moved and supported, any additions, corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. Minutes of June 9th, 2025.
Motion to approve, June 9th minutes.
Second?
Moved and supported, all in favor.
Aye.
I assume you didn't have any corrections, right? Okay.
I did not read through.
Okay. Unfinished business, any member have unfinished business? Hearing none. Item seven, new business, Lombardo Bruce Orchard Site Condos, seven parcels, and there are a request or two variances on that parcel. So at this time, would entertain a motion to open a public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and supported. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. At this point, I will give a little bit of information prior to the presentation by the applicant. The presentation by the applicant has unlimited time to give his presentation. The board will ask questions, there is a public participation portion of the public hearing. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. If they go a little bit longer, we're not going to really worry about that, we want to hear what people have to say. If several people are going to comment on the same thing, if there's a spokesperson, we would certainly encourage that, but it's not required. The minimum number of votes to approve the request is three. The approval or denial of a variance request does not change the requirement for the applicant to apply, to be in compliance with all other ordinances in the township. Section 161.7.1C6 are a series of tests that this body has to apply to the request, and only those are used to determine whether a variance will be approved or not approved. If the variance is not approved, the applicant can appeal to the circuit court, and that process is also spelled out in the ordinance. So at this time, unless there are questions on the process, would invite Mr. Lombardo to make his comments. I understand you have a presentation.
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you.
Cosmo Lombardo with Lombardo Homes of Michigan. So, just to go over kind of what I'd like to go over today, first I'd like to start with the background of why we're here. I think one person here was around for about the 12 months of process it took us to assemble what was seven parcels in three different zoning districts and four landowners, and very hodgepodge situation to come into an orderly development of the community that matches the surrounding land uses, address some of the concerns of the residents, planning commission, board trustees. So I want to go over the background, why are we here? That's the first thing I want to do, and where we started. Right now it looks like a nice orderly site that's easy to develop, it certainly was not that about a year and a half ago when we started this process. Then I'd go over both specific.
I just want to make one, one comment before you start, just for clarification. Some of the documentation that went up previously identified a third request for a variance coming to the ZBA, and that was on ordinance 187, I believe.
That's correct.
Which is for the road right of way. The ZBA does not have the authority to hear that, and it was, I believe it's been passed on to the, to the full board for review and consent. So if anyone saw that, that's why it does not appear on that slide.
That is correct, and then I won't bore you by reading the whole thing, but the top one there, it has to do with the private road requirement of 200-foot lot depths, and we'll clarify that's not the R1B requirement. And the other one is the tree variance, and go over our requests. So just to start, background, in the top right corner you see what this all started as. Generally, there were seven parcels here, four landowners, three of the parcels were actually landlocked, one of them you can see right there in the C2 district is a 100-by-14 strip, and there were three zoning districts on this property, none of which lined up with the, with the actual parcel boundary. So we tried to take something that, little bit of a mess it and clean it up. So we, before we even submitted, we met with the planning commission, Jared was at that first initial meeting, went over some ideas, we went in front of the planning commission ultimately in August of '24. The plan that, that you're seeing today is very dissimilar to the original plan. This, this plan that you see on the bottom right, what was something that went from a process from August of '24 to about April of '25. Many planner visions were made during that process, several different work meetings where we tried many different layouts that met the goals of the planning commission, the board of trustees, and some of the residents in the community. Some of the things, some of the changes that have to do, I think, with this variance, among many other, commercial, they wanted to leave commercial along Van Dyke so there would continue to be a commercial corridor along Van Dyke. No connection to Mellon Street, the residents at the first meeting, I had a through street from Mellon to Van Dyke, and it was all residential. That, the residents were very concerned about traffic on Mellon, Mellon's not in great shape, and they didn't want to just have no traffic on Mellon, so we agreed to not connect to Mellon Street. And in general, an orderly concept plan, and Jared was in several meetings where we tried to lay this out, where it wouldn't require any variance of any kind, there were roads in people's backyards, cul-de-sacs ending into people's backyards, you know, double-loaded lots with roads on both sides, things that just, they weren't right, they weren't consistent with orderly development, and generally home site sizes consistent with surrounding land uses. So we went through about a year of making changes, now there's several other things, they don't really pertain to this, or there was landscaping requirements, a berm, architectural requirements, things like that. But we ultimately entered into a conditional rezoning agreement that actually had that concept plan you see attached to it on March 16th with the board of trustees, and gained preliminary site plan approval conditioned upon certain variances from the planning commission in July. After the rezoning agreement was ultimately executed, and approval had been granted, it was noted, hey, a couple of these things we did in the conditional rezoning agreement are actually variance requests, so we need a couple of variance requests to do them. And the reason I go over this background is because this background is why we're here. This background's why we're asking for these ordinances, this was not a normal parcel that just, just came together. We made several revisions to our site plans, it's a combination of the existing conditions we had to deal with, and trying to satisfy the requests of the planning commission, board of trustees, and, and surrounding residents to come up with something that, that was right for the community. So to go into the first variance, 200-foot minimum lot depth, that's ordinance 161, 5.17C5. Now, to clarify, this is very important, this has to do with a private road, this has nothing to do with lot area, all these lots meet the R1B zoning district. In fact, if this was a public road, I would not be asking for this variance because it wouldn't apply. So it says that the placement of private road shall allow for the development of building sites with a minimum depth of 200 feet, exclusive of the 60-foot road easement on both sides. This is a very atypical ordinance, I didn't know about it till after I entered into the agreement because I've never heard of such, such an ordinance, you know, it's a little different. I think some of you have spoken with Joe Tangari, it's, it's atypical, it's, nobody can necessarily see the reason for it, but two of the conditions of the rezoning agreement, the top one, really being something the planning commission wanted to see, that the subject property shall be developed and used as generally set forth on the conceptual plan, that's that one there, they didn't want to see me go and, you know, develop some of the kind of sketches we were looking at during the process, which had cul-de-sacs that ended into the timbers, connected to Mellon, things like that. And the other one was that there should be no vehicular access to Mellon Street from the subject property. Now you take those two conditions, which are very important conditions to the planning commission, the board of trustees, and the residents, and generally, in order to make those two conditions work, I need a variance to the 200-foot lot depth requirement. I don't know if this board is aware, the international fire code gives an 800-foot cul-de-sac length, so you can't make a dead-end street more than 800 feet. Well, that would get me 100-foot lots to Lot 8, I'd only be develop half the property without connecting to Mellon. So what you need to do is you need to come in, make a block, and, and come back out. Well, unfortunately, this dimension is not 2, 4, 6, 860 feet, it's just not. So what we did was we made, as you typically would, we made the lots wider, instead of 100 feet wide, they're 120, 150 feet wide, and shallower, pretty typical, but they still meet the 20,000 square feet required in the R1B zoning district. Now, another important thing is that, and I said it, the ordinance wouldn't apply if the roads were public, it's my understanding, and Joe Tangari, the township planner, has said this at several meetings, Macomb County is not currently accepting public roads up in Bruce Township, or at least they're not maintaining them, and so he hasn't done any public road site plan approvals lately, and so if this, again, if this was public, I would not be asking for this variance. And just, again, to clarify, these lots are not smaller than the R1B zoning district, they are the same size. So that, that's kind of the background of the minimum lot depth variance. So going to replacement trees, compliance with the ordinance require 588 replacement trees within this community. We actually went in front of the planning commission for site plan approval in June of '25, and we had discluded some like box elders and things like that, but that's not how the ordinance read, so Joe Tangari said, hey, no, that's not how the ordinance reads, you have to redo your calculations, it came out to 588. And at that meeting, and I'm relying on Jared to substantiate some of what I'm saying, Joe Tangari said, guys, I don't even know how he's going to fit these trees on here. And I said, you know what, why don't you table me, and I'll do my absolute best to fit as many trees as possible. We ultimately met with the planning commission members, and Joe Tangari, the planner, and our landscape architect, and we just shoved in every tree we possibly could. We, we had other ideas to do, but we couldn't fit in any more trees without putting trees over utility easements, drainage swales, building envelopes, restricting rear yard uses, and so we put in as many as we can. We expanded open space areas, we actually pulled our storm sewer up from the property line 10 feet throughout and planted a strip all the way around the outside of the community, as many trees as we could fit, but unfortunately we just couldn't, couldn't fit anymore. So just as a, as an exhibit, that's the June 25 plan you see there on the left, and between then and when we came back to the planning commission, that's the July 25 plan. So you can see we planted all around the edge, we made the open space next to 21 a little larger and planted as many trees as we could in there, and really we just, we did what we could. So, our request is generally, just pursuant to the site plan that we've generated with the planning commission, with the board of trustees, and with listening to the residents about traffic and things like that, over, over the past 12 months, our request is that you grant the following variances, it'd be a variance to ordinance 161, Article 5.17C5 to allow select home sites within Bruce Orchards to have less than 200-foot lot depth. Clarification, they all meet the dimensional requirements of the R1B zoning district, I think that's very important, I'm not asking for smaller lots, I'm not. And a variance to ordinance 161, 5.20B3, to allow 415 replacement trees to be planted within Bruce Orchards, and 588, and I'd love to plant 588, I just, I don't know where to fit them, so.
Okay.
Volunteer a common area in Culverfield.
I, I would be open to, I own other properties in the township, if ultimately this was something that ZBA willing to consider, I'd be willing, I don't think the ordinance says it, but I'd certainly be willing to offer up planting of those remaining trees on other properties in the township.
Get us overall.
Yeah, I don't think we're going to entertain that at this point. So I think procedurally what we're going to do is discuss and make a decision on the first variance, and then probably open another public hearing on the second. So for the first, for the 200-foot lot depth variance, are there any questions from board members?
Jenny, do you want to close your thing, or are you on the table?
In looking at the site plan that you proposed, I think that you could make the lot depths work if you eliminated two lots. If you took out lots either 23 and 24, or lots 26, 25, and 26, it allows you to take, to have the amount of land that you, you would need, you would come a whole lot closer to what the requirements of the township are. So I don't know if you considered that at all, you know, of course then the, the road would have, could be, be a little smaller, and some, the, the two lots that would be left would back up to the cul-de-sac, or not cul-de-sac, but you know, the back side of the road. That was my thought, or I guess you could go 24 and 25, if you eliminated those, you could do this, well, no, you can't really, but you have to do either 23 and 24, or 25 and 26, eliminate those two, either, either group, and you can get the depths that we're looking for.
So the only issue with that, that'll create double-loaded lots, I'll have lots with two street frontages. I mean, that's just not a great way to do home sites, you typically want backyards backing up to backyards, I'd have these three lots, and those would be the two you'd eliminate because they're oversized, I'd have these three lots backing up to a street.
Unless you made a common area and put trees in there, then you're not backing those lots up to the street, right? Because you still got plenty of room if you did that.
No, these, I'd basically suck this whole thing up into lots, because these are about 150, so I need 100, that's about 150, I'd leave, I'd have a 50-foot open space or something, and some of those are 140, but, you know, one thing that I think's important to note too is, it's a strange ordinance, it's my understanding the planning commission is looking at why it even exists, if it should be amended, it's, it's a very strange ordinance.
Do you have any comments, Jared?
I don't know why the ordinance reads that way, it is a little unusual, and it is odd predicament if you can't get a public road, and then you're stuck to the requirements of a private road that make this challenging. So, whether it changes in the future or not, it remains to be seen, but unfortunately can't be applied to that this evening.
Jenny, do you have any other comment?
The only other comment I had was regarding the entrance, or the entrance exit at Van Dyke. We all know that Van Dyke is, every year, every six months, is increasing in traffic up and down that road, and who knows what it's going to be in the next 10, 20 years, how much we're going to, traffic we're going to have. I see it as a safety issue to just have only a right-hand turn lane, I mean, a straight-out lane with no left-hand turn lane coming out of the development. Not only does it back up traffic that wants to go to the right, but it's a safety issue trying to get out onto Van Dyke, turning left. So to me, we need to have, of course, an incoming lane, and then a left-hand turn lane, and a right-hand turn lane for that particular location, just for the safety of the residents now and in the future. So I'm not sure how many extra feet you need, what, 15? How wide do you need for an actual lane?
Well, it'll all be in the 60-foot, it'll all be in the 60-foot right-of-way, and one thing, just an important note is, that will require a right-of-way permit from the Macomb County Department of Roads, they'll, they'll have their traffic team review what turn lane warrants exist there during the engineering process, and certainly they, they hold you to what, what needs to be done. We could, you know, accomplish that, assuming it's, it's needed, it will be required by the Macomb County, this is not the last stop, I got a year of engineering to go still, and, you know, if, if it's required, certainly, we would, we would do it.
Any other questions at this point? Okay, I, I would just want to go over a couple things. The first one is for the board's edification, you all received a package that included the conditional rezoning agreement. Page four, item four, and I don't know if you looked at that or not, but I will give you a minute to read it, but in, in effect, I will paraphrase it, the negotiation on this property, to come up with the plan that satisfied the planning commission, satisfied the board, does not relieve the developer of the responsibility of needing the other zoning ordinances, and that again is another reason that it is here. I would also reiterate that each one of the lots meets the requirements for an R1B development, it's been stated, and I would reiterate that. For discussion purposes, I tried to put some order into the variance requests. So I organized them as, I guess as we would look at them, or look at them in other situations. Requests from 0 to 20 feet, there are four of them. A request of that nature is, is, I would say, consistent with what we generally see on a dimensional variance come before this body. 20 to 40 feet, there are four more. 40 to 60 feet, there are seven. 72 feet, there is one. I have never seen a request beyond 20 feet, we have never acted on it. I would consider anything beyond that to not be a reasonable expectation for, for approval, these are huge, huge requests. I don't know if there's any questions or comments about that, if, if there aren't, I'm going to ask, we received a letter from the Lair family, and I would ask at this time, that Dana, you enter that into the public record, and at this time... that Dana, you enter that into the public record. And at this time, if there are any questions, comments from the public, we will entertain those. If you have, if you'd like to speak, please go to the podium, state your name and address.
Mike Kornilov, K-O-R-N-I-L-O-V, 70226 Hillside Court. I was just curious what the dimensions are of the smallest lot.
I know it's 20,000 square feet. I think the smallest lot has a 145, 150 lot depth.
I know the narrowest lot is 100.
You were saying, you mentioned that you made them wider and decreased the depth.
That's right.
Yeah. I don't see that here in this thing. It's deeper than wide.
Yeah, on that one, right. So this one's 100, this one's 100 by 200. That's what they want. This one, for example, is like 140 by 150, just because of the dimension you have from here to here. So even this one, that one's close to 200 feet deep, but this one's less deep. So in order to make it 20,000 square feet, you've got to make it wider.
Okay. It just, it seemed like when you were saying you made it wider than depth. It was confusing me.
Yeah.
I apologize for that.
I think the minimum width is just a little over 100 feet, and the depth varies as you go around. But they all do meet the minimum 100 width requirement.
It just seemed like you said that they made it wider and decreased the depth, but it doesn't appear to be like that.
Evening, everyone. My name's Tony Caruso, C-A-R-U-S-O. I'm actually 11826 Timber Court. I'm number 11 right here. So I guess the only thing that I really want to know is, what I came up here for tonight was for the trees, right? Because everything that's been done all through here is completely removed 20, 25, 30 feet back, right? All the trees are gone. I mean, it's worse for Sam and Sean. You can actually see Van Dyke in here now. So I'm more concerned with his tree plantings and what we're going to do about that. And then I guess, just one other question. The last meeting you guys had, I was never made aware, it wasn't presented, that the 40 KV line was going to be put right along everyone's backyard. That was never brought up here, nor told to any of us at all that you were going to allow that to happen. I don't think anyone in our neighborhood found that out either. So everyone here that bought homes with no 40 KV lines now have 40 KV lines shoved in their backyard. I think that's wrong. I just wanted to make that statement because it wasn't discussed here twice. No one's brought it up. It's your power line.
The power line.
It's more than your 13-2. It matters more because it's a 40 KV line versus a 13-2 that's everywhere. But I just think it's wrong that no one here brought it to any resident's attention. So you allowed it to move because he had to, you know, where it's coming through here, existing forever, I'm assuming, right? And sure, there was other ways that'd add a cost to them. But you didn't make anybody aware that you're going to allow that to be shoved in their backyard. I think it's wrong. So I think it's really wrong, actually, because people didn't buy, some of us knew each other because we might have Cloverfield. And then, hey, who wants to be by 125 KV? I didn't. I mean, I have it in my backyard. I don't care. I knew it was there. But all of them with young kids bought this site purposely, not to be by that 40 KV. And now it's hanging over their backyard. So I care about the trees, like I said, because those are all completely gone from my view now. I mean, it's bad enough I got to look at genus and all that jump behind there all the time. But like I said, that's what I care, that those get planted and not four footers mature or something. Because, like I said, the whole reason I picked it was leased for the woods. So, but anyways, that was my two cents.
Thank you. Any other comments?
James Boyd, 12,001 Kading Road, Bruce Township. I have several concerns about that because my property backs right up to that. Whole conglomeration there. I have several, several things that I need to know. How close to my property line are they going to develop? How close are those houses going to be to me? What kind of a backyard is going to butt up next to me? Are they going to do anything with bordering that back there for privacy? What's the status of that with all of us that live right up next to this thing? The second thing, I have, I have a real concern about that. Really do. Because I don't think they've thought that through either as to how they're going to fence that off, or what they're going to do with that whole section. And I see those lotments over on the east side of that over there. My God, they're right up on the property line. They're not 15, 20 feet off of the property line over there. They have no backyard. And I'm concerned about that here. I'm concerned about that. I'm really concerned about the entrance and exit at Kading Road. Now, we talked about that the last time I was here. I hate to keep coming back here for this whole thing, but it seems like I have to. That exit, where that goes out on Van Dyke is not appropriate. It's 24 feet, if I remember, right from Kading Road. That's it. What are you going to do with the traffic? Kading Road gets more traffic coming off the expressway than you can believe. They get off up there, come down this street right here, make a right-hand turn, and right up Kading Road. Our street is overrun with traffic right now, to the point where we can't stand it anymore. I mean, it's just constant roar. And just big trucks, we're getting everything off that expressway counting up Kading Road. Trailer trucks after trailer truck after trailer truck. And you people want us to fix the road? That's not right either. Because you're throwing more and more traffic on that street and telling us, we got to pay to fix the road on Kading Road. That's bullcrap. With what you're doing here, they just, they should have to put the road down so that we can get in and out and properly be done. The second thing I have concerns about is a traffic light up there. This exit where you're 24 feet or 25 feet from Kading Road is just ridiculous. Two roads coming out there, and two heavily roads going to be trapping that. There's a lot going to come out of that subdivision all day long, and there's a lot of it that goes to Kading Road right now which shouldn't even be there. But it comes there. And there needs to be something done about the traffic situation there because you're close to a shopping mall, right close there. You've got a market and drugstores, urgent care. You've got everything right there on that corner. And that's going to be one hell of a mess right there trying to get two people. I'll never get out up there. We'll never get out. If they don't do something, you can't have two driveways that's going to carry 5,000 cars a day, or ins and outs up there, or better. It's probably more than that. They all is up in the 10,000 number. I know that's what it is up in there. And something needs to be thought over about that. That, I don't know how this is laid out, and who owns what on all this, but somewhere this, where Kading Road is at there, that road needs moved. It can't come out there, and that's the Kading Road, like it's going out there right now. But we can't get in and out now. And it needs traffic lights up there someplace. That has to be brought into the equation as well. Where's those traffic lights going to go?
Okay. Just, just for clarification for everyone here, there are two questions before this body. One is the depth, the other is the trees. Your comments are appreciated, and they will go in the record, and I'm sure someone will. But it is not an issue that we can take up here or even discuss here.
Okay, then it was misprinted in the book. You didn't tell us what you were going to do here, or I may not have come. For trees, you can put all those in you want back there. It's less that I have to look at. So, anyway, that's my concerns with that. I may not have had to talk about it, but I didn't realize it was restricted and funneled down to two items.
Those are the two items that are before us tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there any questions or comments from the board? Any other comments, questions?
I just wanted to know, we're not talking about this, but I needed to know, are you proposing to fence the detention pond? Or did I see that on there, or did I not?
No.
I think to Tom's point, what is that relevant to the items we're discussing?
I think it just needs to be brought up.
All right. If there are no other questions.
Well, I just, I don't have questions. I have comments, if that's all right. So as you've heard a little bit, we've been talking about this parcel, these parcels for going on a year back to the August 7th meeting. Originally proposed as R1C, that was denied, went through a couple different iterations. We even had one that went to the board, passed the planning commission 4-2. The board ultimately chose to deny that, that plan. So came back to the planning commission as a full R1B. Again, I think some of the, the amount of space have evolved between what was going to be commercial versus what was going to be residential. Like, as part of the rationale, which ultimately received unanimous approval by the planning commission, is consistent with the master plan, is R1B. So the density is as, as zoned for in that area, consistent with some of the other residential areas around there, and R1B zoning. There's some oddities about this parcel, or these group of parcels. There's three landlocked parcels today, so that, again, factored into why we ultimately unanimously approved it, along with the feedback from the community of not expanding the traffic on Melon. So I understand there's some variances being sought. I would say the planning commission has spent a significant amount of time with, with this particular project. We did unanimously support it back to the board. It was approved. It wasn't until site plan that some of these things came up. But in general, I guess I'm struggling with this first variant, just because if it was a public road, this would not be an issue at all. And if you can't get a public road, how do you, how do you get around that?
Just one comment on that. It's difficult or impossible for us to act on an ordinance that has not yet been enacted to change what may happen someday. What we're looking at here is 16 of 26 lots that need significant variances. And we have to deal with what we have in front of us. And it's, and that, that may be unsavory to some, maybe to all. But we have, that's what we have to deal with. Mike, comment?
Any other comments?
As far as trees go?
Well, we will discuss the trees after we've finished this one, okay? All right. Well, I have some other comments. The issue clearly is the private road and the inability to secure approvals, or whatever is necessary, to put in a public road. And as Mr. Lombardo stated, if he could get a public road, he wouldn't be here tonight, and neither would we. But we are here tonight. We have another, I guess, pending item that may impact these requests. It is the request that is before the board on the road right-of-way. It's for a 30-foot road right-of-way. At this time, the right-of-way would be bigger if they didn't approve it, which would make the variance request even larger on some of the lots. The 200-foot requirement that's in the Bruce Township zoning ordinance, and I have spoken with a planner, I've spoken with the township attorney, it is an oddity. It is not something that's normally seen or required. They couldn't give me one other locality that they have ever dealt with where this requirement is in place. Approving variances of this size, the decisions of the zoning board of appeals do not set precedent. But they certainly represent how this body would look at that. And more importantly, how another developer or builder would look at a decision reached here to grant variances of that size. I don't think it's in the township's best interest. And I don't think that it is appropriate at this time, with the number of questions that we have, to ask for a decision by this body. It would be my recommendation, and I would ask for a motion, to refer the question formally of the 200 feet and the rest of that section to the planning commission, and ask that they take a look at that. They can move on that as quickly as they want. And postpone a decision on this variance request to a time subject to the call of the chair. And we would, after the planning commission's discussions, we would have Dana contact Mr. Lombardo to set up a date and to reconvene. So I'm not going to close the public hearing. That leaves us of publishing and, and other timeline issues that we may run into. So that is my recommendation to the board at this point. And I'm willing to hear any comments or entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, without further comment on that, and not paraphrasing everything that Mr. Calquafun just said, I would make that motion to refer this item on the, the variance to the planning commission for their review. And after such time, bring it back to this body for consideration.
It's moved and seconded. Any comments?
So what is the intent of this?
The intent is for the planning commission to take a look at that requirement and see if it's really necessary. I know we've, we referred the four-to-one, or one-to-four ratio on 10-acre parcels to the planning commission, and they, they studied that and changed that. I think without that requirement, we wouldn't be here discussing this, this either. And there is absolutely no, no one seems to know why it's there. And I can't find any other place that it's present. If it's reduced, whatever, that, that has an impact on what we're doing, plus the action that's going to be required by the board on the, on the right-of-way, or the, the road question that's there. So are there any other questions or comments? Hearing on roll call, Dana?
Teller?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Barrett?
Yes.
Maz?
Yes.
Calquafun?
Yes. So that is, we will have a conversation, and Dana will, when, when that meeting is to be scheduled. All right. The next item is the tree item, and we'll consider it in the same public hearing. And again, we are not going to close the public hearing. So I think the presentation was made. Are there any questions from board members at this point?
No questions for me. This was also part of the discussion on the site plan review. I don't have the full I don't have the full list in front of me. There was a significant number of trees that were not of a species that we would allow to be planted today. And so, we, again, the Planning Commission was unanimously in support of conditional approval upon the variance, because such a large number of those trees are scrub trees that were not planted with purpose, and are not things that we would even want in our township today.
Are all those trees going to survive?
The ones we plant?
Yeah, as close as they are together.
Um, you know, I had a, I'm sorry. I had a landscape architect lay tho, lay those out for me, and I, I assume they will, you know? I mean, he, he generally spaces them for me. Now, remember, this is a 100-scale plan, so they might look a little closer than they are. And one of the big things that you see right here is all these just, just really packed in here. That was, that was part of the conditional rezoning agreement, and part of really what was important to Planning Commission in that. This is like a berm, probably five, six-foot-tall berm, planting's all along it, so. That's, that's, and that's what I'm saying. We made every effort to plant absolutely every tree we possibly could. They're as close as they can get, we planted as many as we could. This isn't us just saying, "I don't want to plant the trees." It's, you can see that we shoved in every tree we could there to do our absolute best to meet the ordinance. If I could get 588 trees there, I wouldn't be here. There'd just be 588 trees there. But, just wasn't, wasn't possible without compromising future builds, compromising drainage swales, utility structures, things like that.
Refresh my memory, how high is the berm going to be?
I have a, I can't remember if I have a 30-foot, let's say it's a 30-foot easement, because I can't remember what the easement size is. Let's say it's 30-foot, so you got 15 on each side, at a three-on-one slope, then it puts you five feet, five feet tall.
What size trees are you planning to put in there?
You know, two-and-a-half-inch caliper nursery trees. And they'll obviously grow over time, but we get two-and-a-half-inch caliper nursery trees and...
Considering what's happened for, for Mr. Caruso, I'd, I'd like to see something that could, you know, restore in some way a, just a better situation, you know, for those back lots there that are now going to be backing up somehow, I don't know, can you?
Well, yeah, and that's what, you see the difference is, we actually pulled our storm sewer up into the lots so that the swale could drain into the storm sewer up ahead of the lots. We planted this entire perimeter, all the way down here. Our entire perimeter of the site is planted heavily.
How about going straight north?
Right here.
Stop, now go north, I can't see it.
And right here?
I see, according to this, that you have some...
This is the other side. That's the other side.
Right.
That's the timber, that's the timber, yes.
So, he's one of these, I don't know which one.
This one right here.
Oh, that one, okay.
That one's terrible, don't get me wrong, that's just, I mean, just where they were cut down previously. You know, a berm's fine, but, I mean, it is what it is, I guess. Because I didn't realize that, and I'm sorry if I'm talking, I'm not supposed to be, I apologize. But I didn't realize that the rest of the state is commercial right now and having trees, but, like I said, there's areas we can see from ways already cut down. We do the testing, we can see on the bandwagon. Two or three things, you know, over towards the, I'll be dead before they're digging up the block, everything.
Yeah, he said two-and-a-half-inch, that's a dime.
Two-and-a-half-inch caliper, and the trees, they're, they're about five-foot tall-ish?
Yeah, that's still, I mean, those are small trees, and you're basically replacing a wooded area for a whole bunch of residents that are used to looking at trees with babies, that by the time they're 20 or 30 feet tall, those people all have moved, right?
Sure, that's typical though.
I'm just wondering, in lieu of not doing 588, what it would take to get a percentage of those, not every tree, but a percentage of those larger trees to fill some of that in, especially, like, where residents back up, right?
Like four-inch caliper trees or something?
Yeah, like intermittently space in some, so that there is some height and some, you know, does that make sense?
Yeah. Are these all deciduous plants, or are they some kind of?
They're, they're a mixture.
Both.
They're a mixture, they're both.
It's a nice mixture, don't get me wrong.
Yeah.
I've been looking at this for two weeks, I see that.
The, the size of the trees in those locations is, is something that we can request. The, the one comment that I would make right now is, the variance stays with the parcel, not with the developer. So, if we approve this tonight, and there are changes that come as a result of something planning finds out, or we have to go back and re-examine this issue, it would be my opinion that we would be better off leaving this until the next meeting. Also, if there are changes that have to be made, otherwise, the township and the developer are stuck with that plan if things change. So, that would be my suggestion.
Like adding the four-inch caliper trees? That, you wouldn't have to do that if we approved it tonight?
Well, we can pick that as part of an approval tonight. But if something changes, and some of those lots have to be changed as a result of the road, or something, you're stuck with this, whether it then is consistent with what, what is done later. Yeah, we can ask for the bigger trees in certain areas, and I think...
I guess I'm trying to understand your concern as well. So, if we, if we approved this for, what, 144 trees, is it a concern that if it changed, then it could only fit 130 trees now?
Or more.
Or he could do more because?
Yeah, there's, there's no provision to reconsider the decision that's made, unless he takes it to court, of course. But we cannot come back at the next meeting and reconsider and say, "Oh, now we want to do this." So, I, we can do it tonight if you want.
I, I would understand your concerns.
Yeah, I would just think that looking at both of them at the same time, after a decision is made on, on the road, and that the lots are going to remain the same, and then requiring bigger trees in certain areas could be addressed all at the same time. So, it's whatever motion the board wants to make on that.
Just a suggestion, you could tie it to the site plan, right? You could say, "Hey, this doesn't apply if this site plan changes." Put something like that in the motion, just a suggestion. If the site plan changes, the variance is void. I don't know exactly how to say it, but you could say something.
We can't reconsider it, so it doesn't void it. Once we approve it, that's it.
Okay. Okay.
So, in order to get it more to the, the betterment of people on the, like, lot 11, around the timbers there, we would have to, I guess it depends on how you word the, the motion. I would like to see more evergreens in, in this berm, in this area, backing up to these, these lots here, rather than like the maples and that type of thing, or... So, how, how do we do that? Does that sound like a better option for people like along here?
Jack Moore is offense.
It's going to help a little bit more with the visual, and it does cut down more sound, right? The evergreens are...
Yeah, I would think.
But if we're going to postpone this until we get all the rest of them, I think we leave it for that discussion, right?
Well, in the interim, I think what we can do is tell Joel, the, the planner, what, what the conversation is, and see what his recommendations would be. And he can work with Mr. Lombardo. I think it's pretty clear what, what the decision is going to be at some point. And it certainly is to add a little bit more of a buffer, visual buffer anyway, for the residents in the, in the timbers, so.
Cosmo, what was the easement, like, how big is the berm wide?
It's a 30-foot easement, so you'd be able, at a three-on-one slope coming up both sides, you got to cut it in half, you got to come up both sides. At three-on-one, 15 feet, you can go five feet tall. Plus, you have a five-foot-tall planting, originally five-foot-tall, when they plant, it'll be five-foot-tall, so that's about 10 feet. And then, they'll grow, you know, they'll grow and get larger. But when it's initially planted, it'll be a five-foot berm with a five-foot tree on it.
I'm thinking of the berm that is along the backside of Meyer. That's a big berm.
They have much wider easement there, too, and much, much, obviously, much taller berm. The berm's got to be 15 or 16 feet.
So, that's starting out about 10 feet is what, height-wise, you're going to be looking at?
To the top of the trees, yeah, when you plant them originally. Of course, they grow, but, yes, starting out.
Can't you, can you go into the commercial parcel and make that easement a little wider? I know you've got 5.542 acres there, and you need five acres, correct, in order to keep this?
That is correct.
At the commercial parcel?
Yep.
I don't know if you can take 10-foot off the backside of that? I don't know how that would affect...
I have the commercial parcel sold to a user. I'm not a commercial builder, I'm a residential builder. I have that sold already, so to, to negotiate additional easement would be challenging.
Too little, too late.
Well, I'm sure that when that comes to fruition, that will be discussed, keeping some kind of ring bell there, if, when and if it's developed.
Yeah, and, and the commercial, yeah, like I said, the commercial parcel's heavily wooded now. And the person I'm selling it to, he has some ideas, but he's nowhere near ready to develop it. That, to cut it, cut down a bunch more big trees, which is what I would be doing, to plant some more two-and-a-half-inch caliper trees, you know, that, that's what I'd be doing. Because right now, that commercial parcel is generally heavily wooded. And, and the, the gentleman who's buying it from me, he has some ideas, but he's not, he, he's not ready to develop. I don't imagine he will be for at least four or five years. And so, I'd be, I'd, actually, I'd probably make the situation worse, because I'd be cutting down a bunch more big trees that would ramp up additional requirements.
Trees, trees, trees.
And then, half of it's already sold, and he's got the woods on his property, he can't be cutting down his trees then, right?
That's true. I, I could try and negotiate with him and ask him, but I certainly can't just promise that I will, right? I, you know?
All right, so what's the pleasure of the board at this point?
I have one more question.
Okay.
As far as the detention pond area goes, is there, like, areas along the west side of that detention pond where you could put more trees? Because it looks like just a single line of trees.
Yeah, I have, I have my storm sewer right here, so I got to put in storm drains. My storm sewer's right on the other side of it, I mean, you know?
Yeah, I mean, in between there.
Up and down the property lines?
Yeah, north and south, or...
Well, I can't put anything in here, this is, you know?
Right, right. But I mean, let's say, look at Lot 13 as an example. Couldn't you put in between, well, let's see, where's that, future sanitary sewer, like, just to the north? With, you've got three trees, just to the north of the future sanitary sewer. Could you, like, double that with trees?
Run another line, potentially, yeah, I mean, I'd have to, I'd have to look at how it affects the building envelopes. Remember, what I'm doing with these trees, though, you have a storm sewer easement at the back of the lot, I'm already losing these people 10-foot of backyard who are going to live in these houses. I've pulled the storm sewer up, moved the easement up, so I could plant behind it and still have everything drain. Every time I add a row of trees, I, I take out more backyard for the future residents. So, it's, it's a balance, it's trying to balance, hey, I want to plant as many trees as I can, but also, people are going to live here, people are going to live in these lots who want backyards, and who, who may want outbuildings, who may want pools, whatever it may be. So, every time I add another row of trees, I take away another 10-foot of the future homeowner's backyard. That, that's my only concern with that.
And as far as, you know, like, saving what's there, couldn't you just save what's on the lot lines? You know, you're going to have that all surveyed, rather than just go in there with a bulldozer and take all the trees out, you know, start over again. Before you do that, can you temporarily do a survey there to show which trees are on the lot lines? Where there is no, no problem with sewers and all that kind of thing? Because most people would want trees on their lot lines.
Well, but, remember, I got to put a road in here. This road right here might be three foot above the grade where it is right now, it might be three foot below. It's not cut right into the dirt in this house, and, and you have to grade drainage swales. With modern engineering requirements, it's, it's next to impossible to save trees on home sites when you have to grade a swale at each property line, when you have to drain the front yard to the curb gutter, when you have to drain the backyard to a, to a storm sewer. There was a time when you could just split lots off public roads, and you just kind of built the house a foot above everything else, and wherever the stormwater went, whatever, you figured it out, right? But with, with the modern engineering requirements of having to show an outlet for all the stormwater, it, trust me, I'd love to do that, because I don't want to plant these trees. It costs me money to cut down trees, and it costs me money to plant trees, and I don't get to charge any extra for the houses because of that. So, if I could save them, no problem. But I don't want to make a promise I can't keep, because I'm going to have to have a high point here, it's going to have a drain back and forth. I got to build a house, I got to grade around the house. I have to build a storm sewer, I have to build a sanitary sewer, I have to build franchise utilities. Very challenging to do that with, with modern engineering requirements, and I don't, I just don't, it typically doesn't work. I had a, I developed a community in Westland where I did that same thing, and I ended up paying the surrounding residents probably over 100 grand, because the trees that I saved all died and fell on people's houses, because I was grading two feet away from them, you know?
You can't bury their roots, they don't like that.
That's right.
That pond, I'm assuming it's, it's set for all, it has to be a certain size for all the drains that run to it?
That's correct.
Is that set at the minimum, or near the minimum now, or is it?
That's at what's required, Urban Land laid that out for me. It's actually much larger than it would be typically, because Macomb County, I'm using the ditch along Mellon as my outlet. Macomb County restricts us to a four-inch outlet for that detention basin, so all that water's going to come in, and it only can go out a four-inch outlet, so the pond's got to be really big to be able to store that water for that long. It is sized correctly, though, and, of course, that's another thing, like I said, this isn't the last stop. I got a year of engineering to go through, Giffords will look at that. If I'm wrong, they're going to tell me I'm wrong and ask me to change it, and, you know?
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Anyone else from the public wish to say anything before we move forward?
I do, just have one thing real quick, just a quick question.
Step to the mic, please.
Just so I know, right, because we don't get everything like the site plans and stuff, which is fine, but you, you're building a new berm here, here, and all the way over there, that's what you got to do?
The berm is on the west side, on the north side there, I'm just planting a bunch of trees.
So, you're just planting, so you're building a berm just from here, or are you going all the way?
The berm starts here and goes all the way to here. And then, this is just planting, it's the same reason, I have storm drains, just like you have...
Yeah, we all have catch basins there as well, right?
The same exact thing will happen right here.
Nope, that's why I just wanted to know if the berm was going there and how that would look.
The site plan's on, on the...
Is it, where I can go see it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you very much, I apologize, thank you very much.
So, can you make a motion then, that would set it up that these can be evergreens all along there with a minimal of deciduous berm? I'm not sure how to say that, how does it fit in with what we need to do?
Well, does that create a situation where those trees could ultimately expand into somebody's backyard? Because they're going to grow, and...
Right.
So, I got, from my perspective, I, I don't know that we should be specifically calling out which type of trees to plant, at least that's not what I'm interested in, so I'd rather... I'd rather have someone that's expert in designing landscaping do that. Because I think eventually those are going to become really big and potentially in somebody's backyard who may not appreciate that.
On top of the berm, is what I'm thinking. Where are these evergreens?
Are they all on top of the berm? I mean, I guess at some point, they're going to get closer to lot lines. I don't know, how far off the easement do they get planted?
Yeah, I mean, we're planting as many as we can, like I said. We put as many trees as we possibly could, and there are probably some that are very close to the property lines of trees. Tree trimming is, you know, there are trees. There are often, you know, trees in normal neighborhoods planted in backyards near property lines, and it does become an issue, but, you know, hopefully, the future residents will be able to work that out, right? Because certainly, if, you know, in 20 years from now, whatever I plant here, a large evergreen tree is going to hang over the property line. But I don't know that that's completely atypical.
Yeah, okay.
I guess as part of the motion, if that's what you would like to see, I would suggest, then, that we ask the planner to get with the developer and discuss the types of trees that are, that are in there. And if you have a landscape architect, I'm sure he can
I do.
provide some input into that, and I would, I would also, I would agree with Jared. I would let the professionals make a decision on the mix. We can't ask for bigger, taller trees whenever we discuss this. So that would be my thought. And I would like to have this postponed to subject of the call, the tariff, along with the other ones, so we don't run into some technical glitch if something changes.
I'll make a motion to postpone this decision until we have a solid site plan agreed with the road conditions. And the change or pass or review of the 200-foot rule.
And you want to add the discussion between the township planner and the developer on the trees, particularly along the berm?
Sure, and we'd like to get part of that review to be the review of the type of trees between the planning commissioner and the builder along the berm.
I'll take care of your questions. All right, do we have a motion? Do we have support?
Support.
Moved and supported. Roll call, please.
Barrett?
Yes.
Teller?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Calcoffin?
Yes.
Moss?
Yes.
Yes.
Do you have any questions before you leave?
No, I don't.
Okay. Dana, did we get that portion of the agreement with the
I'm sorry.
The permission to make the presentation?
Yes. The papers that you submitted.
The, I think, wasn't there supposed to be just an excerpt from the agreement?
I handed that to every, oh. You talking about what I gave you when you came, or what I gave you?
No. The discussion you had on the telephone with Mr. Lombardo.
I sent you two purchase agreements that have a clause in them that orders the same.
Right.
Oh, yeah, that is what I gave.
Things like that. And then one of my previous agreements was actually a seller form, so it didn't have that. So I just called him. I sent him something. He signed and sent it back. I gave him something.
I didn't give it to you because I already gave it to you.
Did I do something to?
That was what you just emailed out yesterday?
No, that's what was at your spot.
Oh, at our spot.
Okay.
There's so much paperwork with this.
Of course, I said this set a record for paper, that's for sure. Okay, I'm going to, we have some other items, but I'm going to ask for about like a five-minute recess on this, okay? So we'll reconvene in five minutes. I need to.
Thank you, gentlemen, for your presentation. Well organized.
Thank you.